Good evening. If anyone wants to, wishes to speak at public forum, please come up here. Or on an agenda item, please come up to the podium and sign up. Okay? Need to do that before the meeting starts in just a few moments. Bon is Victor joining us?
All right, good. Oh, I know, I had to leave early to get.
Call the role, please. Here.
Vice Mayor Vasquez.
Here.
Councilman Santin.
Here.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Here.
And Councilman Faj.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please stand if you are able, able to for the invocation. Heavenly Father, at the beginning of this new year, we thank you for the many ways you have blessed our lives in the past and for new beginnings. We pray for healing, for strength, for insight and vision, for understanding, for transformation, for community, for acceptance of ourselves and others, for making room at our tables, for support, for guidance to find common ground, and for your presence in our hearts, and for a blessed 2025. Amen.
Amen.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to our January thirteenth city council meeting, our first city council meeting of 2025. It's wonderful to see so many of you here, and for those of you that are joining us virtually, welcome. We're going to get started with, well, before we get started with the awards and presentations, I did want to, to mention, we lost a very dear member of our community this past week. Ms. Betty Louise Dunn. She, for those of you that know the Dunn family, the Dunn family has been just so involved in our community and so helpful. They have, under so many circumstances, when we've needed assistance, financial locations, the Dunn family, the Lowell and Betty Dunn Foundation have stepped in. The most recent one is the Cavalier Clock. Ms. Dunn donated the entire Cavalier Clock to our community. And with FEMA, they have provided land in Medley that we can use for when we have to collect debris after hurricanes, and so many other ways throughout the years. So I just wanted to let everyone know, let the family know that we, we will miss Ms. Dunn as part of our community, and if any of you know them, please reach out and, and give them your condolences. There is going to be a service at Grace Lutheran on next week, next Saturday, the eighteenth, I believe. All right, thank you. So we'll move on to awards and presentations, and the first one, well, we have a whole bunch from our police department and our new chief, welcome chief. And I'll let you get started. The first one is the retirement recognition of our former chief. Out of uniform. It's the first time I've seen you out of uniform, Chief Deal. You're really relaxing already, right?
Good evening, Council. Happy New Year. To the residents, my name is Matthew Castillo. I'm the Chief of Police for your hometown Miami Springs. And it's my honor and privilege to acknowledge Chief Jimmy Deal today, first thirty-four years dedicated service to the city. Chief Deal has been like a big brother to me. He's developed me throughout my career. And it doesn't do justice by me reading off a couple highlights of his career, because thirty-four years of his service to the city could last three days of what he has seen and what he's been through. He's been through Hurricane Andrew. He's been through the, the loss of one of our officers. He's seen tornadoes here. He's seen COVID. He's been there, done that, and the department is really losing an asset. But he's not leaving Miami Springs, so we still have him here. I know he's a phone call away. Thank you, Chief Deal. So Chief Deal, he started working as a police dispatcher, December tenth, nineteen ninety. He began the police academy and the Broward Institute of Public Safety in nineteen ninety-three. He began K-9 School at the Miami Beach Police Department with K-9 ARCO. He graduated K-9 School, and K-9 ARCO was the department's first dual-purpose police K-9, narcotics detection and utility patrol. He has a passion for a K-9. In October twenty-four, he was promoted to the Sergeant position following the untimely passing of his K-9 ARCO. Two thousand fifteen, he was promoted to Lieutenant, to a nineteen Captain, and earlier last year to the Chief of Police, which was greatly deserved. Other accomplishments and awards, he was an FTO from nineteen ninety-five to two thousand four. He was Officer in Charge from nineteen ninety-six to two thousand four. He developed and oversaw the department's TASER Electronic Control Device Program and Training from two thousand five to two thousand fifteen. He graduated from the Southern Police Institute's Command Officer Development Course in two thousand fifteen. He's a two-time recipient of the Life Saving Award. He was Officer of the Year nineteen ninety-five and two thousand eleven. He's Officer of the Month, February nineteen ninety-eight, August two thousand two, and July two thousand ten. He's a two-time recipient of the Charles B. Stafford Going the Extra Mile Award recipient. And he was awarded O nine thirty-nine, which is the most arrests in the department in nineteen ninety-five. Quick story about Chief Deal. His final email to the police officers, he said, "Never forget Charles Stafford." That's the type of guy he is, type of officer he is as well. He doesn't want all this show. He just does his job. He's one of the guys that just does his job. So I'm very grateful and honored to be able to present your retirement today. Thank you, Chief Deal. Yeah, no, I am. On behalf of the city of Miami Springs, we'd like to give you two plaques and awards.
Don't say a whole lot, so, thank you. I'll keep this very sweet, short, hopefully no tears. City Manager, again, thank you so much for the opportunity to be Chief of Police here. Sixteen-year-old Jimmy Deal, little punk rock kid, would have told you to go jump off a building, thinking he's gonna be up here doing this. Now, I'm born and raised here. I love the city. This department will keep this place safe. I know that. We have excellent, excellent officers. Just remember, proactive policing is not a crime, like the sign in my office said. Unfortunately, there has to be some hard work done. Keep training people, wear your vests, stay safe. Council, please continue to support them. Without your support, they will not be able to do their job. It's as simple as that. Again, thank you so much. It's been a wonderful career. Catch you guys around. Goodbye.
He's running away. Yes, let's stay here. While the officers come up, Chief Deal, I just wanted to, I'm sure I'm voicing the sentiments of our community, of all the residents. All of the achievements, all of the awards that Chief Castillo mentioned are, I know, just the very top of the iceberg of everything you've done for our community and all the recognition that you should receive for everything that you've done for our community. So from the bottom of our hearts, we're eternally grateful for your service and for watching over us for so many years. God bless you.
Wait, Chief, before you leave, I want to say one thing. So, I too, born and raised here. I remember being a kid, very small, and going through the neighborhood, and a Miami Springs police officer stopping and giving, giving us football cards of like Glenn and Lyle Blackwood back, back in the day. And when I think about, like, you're one of those kids that used to be riding their bikes in the street along, along with us. It is such a point of pride for our city when somebody who is one of us, who is a product of our community, to become a person of such influence, it's really a source of pride. But what is more seldom is when that person that is a product of our community comes back and gives back to our community through, through your leadership, to the point that it improves the city, and so now the city now is a product of your leadership and your stewardship. And so you have set an incredible standard for all of us who grew up here, set an incredible standard for this young man right here, who's gonna do everything in his power to try to live up to that standard. So congratulations.
Captain Deal, thank you for your time. Thank you for keeping us safe, and it's a true blessing to see you come to retirement. You see your, your retirement come to fruition in such a crazy and very risky profession. So God bless you, and you are blessed because you're here and you're able to now enjoy your life.
After Walter, I think it's kind of hard for me to articulate how much we appreciate you, but we set it off the record here, plenty of time we've talked. We are thankful for all the time that you've given, and obviously for the leadership like Walter mentioned. And you're definitely gonna be missed, but we're definitely in good hands. I know that, and you know that, and I hope the whole rest of the community does. So thank you for what you've done to this community and to this department. Thank you.
Hey, and the council and I are gonna stay here up front so that we're not going back and forth because we have a lot of exciting presentations tonight. So the next promotion ceremony is for Police Sergeant Robert Castillo to Police Lieutenant by Chief, presented by Chief Matthew Castillo.
Okay, like she said, he's going from Sergeant to Lieutenant, and I feel like I shouldn't even look at the paper because we're born together. And I can tell stories all day long, but he deserves it, and I still think I'm the older brother, but I'm not by a minute. So Robert Castillo, again, a hometown kid, he was born and raised in Miami Springs where he currently resides. He has a, a Business Administration degree from Miami Dade College. He started as a public service aide as me, as well as me, in two thousand eleven. He attended the Broward College PSA Academy and was hired as an officer in two thousand twelve, and attended the Miami Dade College Police Academy in January fourth, two thousand thirteen. He was the Officer of the Year in two thousand fifteen. He became an Officer in Charge in two thousand fifteen as well. And he was a part of our Crime Suppression Team twice, and he was promoted to Sergeant in November twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen. And it's my pleasure to promote him to the rank of Lieutenant today. So thank you.
It's all the talk. Thank you, everyone. First, I'd like to thank the Council, City Manager J.C. Jimenez, our Chief, Matthew Castillo. He was my first FTO, literally the first day. First day we had a arrest. It's a minor traffic arrest, but that's where everyone starts. He was so excited that day. It went from there to him being my day shift Sergeant. When I was promoted to Sergeant, he became my day shift Lieutenant, and now he's my chief. I always have to listen. You know how it is. That's how it is. Hey, there's no better person to be here in this position anyways. Very proud to work for him. I'm very proud to be here with everyone here. I'd also like to thank my dad and my mom. They set their roots here in nineteen sixties. My dad was from the Peter Pan flights, and he stayed with the Espino family, same house you grew up in, Kevin. He was there for a long time. They made their roots here, and they lived in the, they, when they had my sister, they moved to River House Apartments, where my mom was a manager. They went from there. They finally got their opportunity to buy a house in Ibis, Dr. Green's house. He said, "No." And now we all live here on Ibis. My brother and me, we both live on Ibis. Sorry. It's a, it's a good moment for us and my family. And then, uh, thank you. Thank you, Chief Deal. Like you said, you've been a mentor to me and many, many officers here as well. You had thirty-four years of dedicated service to the community. I can only wish to have that kind of service as well. Chief Guzman is not here. He taught me the importance of being an officer first. No matter what your rank is, you're an officer first. He used to get down dirty with us, too. Chief Bond gave me my first opportunity here to be an officer. Started as a PSA, and then I was, then I was an officer and continuing. It's a great history that we have here. My dad set roots here, just like my, my wife, his family set roots here. Because of how great this community is, it's very important that we keep it that way. And why it's that way is because of everyone back here, everyone along this line. Just like Officer Collins, retired Officer Collins in the back. I'm very glad to see you today. I love it. Be here with your son, who's gonna be a Sergeant today. It's awesome. I appreciate it. I can only hope I can do the same thing, that everyone's happy with how I perform, and I do the best I can for the community. I love Miami Springs and God bless it. Thank you.
Lieutenant, on behalf of our community, again, and your family, you know, just listening to you, listening to Chief Castillo, to Chief Deal, talk about their experiences in our city, how our city is, they were born and bred here. They're part of our community, and listening to the passion in your voices and how much you love it. We are so blessed that our city has police officers that watch over us, that are so committed to our community, and you could hear it in their voice. We're very, very proud of you, of both of you, and thank you for your service. This is a really exciting night for us, for our community. We have one more promotion for Police Officer Kyle Collins to Police Sergeant, presented by Chief Matthew Castillo, and I just didn't realize that your father was in our police department also. What, what an honor. It's just, you know, that just speaks to the legacy of, of being part of Miami Springs, right? And thank you all. God bless you and God bless your families.
Yeah, I don't want to get too emotional, but, uh, the first time, the first time I met Kyle, I don't know if you remember that day, Kyle. So I'm a rookie police officer, two thousand eleven, I want to say. And we hear one of those calls over the radio that you never want to hear as a police officer. It's called a three fifteen call. It's when an officer is in distress and needs backup immediately. That three fifteen, three fifteen call was made by his father, Jeff Collins. He was conducting his traffic enforcement on South River Drive, and a sixteen-year-old kid drove with him hanging onto the vehicle for over fifty yards. And I was a rookie officer. I didn't go to the scene, but he tasked me with the, the task to go ahead and get Kyle. Kyle, at the time, was at the Miami Springs High School at wrestling practice. And I went in there, and I didn't know what to do. I didn't know how to tell him that we don't know what's going on with his father. And I told him, I go, "Kyle, your father's gonna be okay." The minute I say that, he runs out the door and goes in my patrol car, a full sprint. And he just wanted to know his dad was okay. And I'm so proud to be able to promote you to Sergeant today because you were my public service aide. I took you under my wing. We have a lot of history together, and the Sergeant position is so important for a police department. It gives people the opportunity to develop officers, develop our future, so we don't take this rank lightly, and you're more than well-deserving of this. Kyle, born and raised in Miami Springs. He went to every school in Miami Springs, every public school. He graduated from high school in two thousand fifteen. He went to Miami Dade College and got his Associate in Criminal Justice. He started as a public service aide in two thousand sixteen. He did a year at the public service position and was sponsored to go to the City of Miami Police Academy. He graduated from that in two thousand eighteen. He worked in patrol for several years and was an FTO, training about everybody here in this building. And then he became an OIC under Lieutenant Castillo, and now we're promoting him to the rank of Sergeant. Kyle, God bless and good luck.
I was completely composed. I did not know he was gonna say that, and I low-key, I got choked up. I wasn't expecting that at all, guys, you know? So I really didn't know I was gonna speak today. I'll try to keep it short because I like to, to talk. I've never shared this. When I first started here as a PSA, you know, I worked day shift under Sergeant Castillo, and I always thought it was the neatest thing, and no offense, Dad, because, you know, something's coming your way now, but I worked under Sergeant Castillo as eighteen, nineteen-year-old kid, and I'm looking at a young sergeant, younger than the rest of his shift, a bunch of old timers, no offense. No offense, and I'm like, wow, look how he's able to supervise and take care of all these guys that are much older, you know, I've been on much longer. And I always knew, I'm like, man, if I can train myself, if I can study, if I can work hard, that's what I want to do. I want to be the young guy, being able to know what I gotta do, you know, to be able to be a good supervisor for my guys, take care of my guys, and take care of people of the city. And man, I was really composed, but I wasn't expecting that. So a lot of people, they say, hey, you know, put your name in a bunch of different specialized units, you know, hey, your dad was a motor, put your name in motor, put your name for the AOPR, CST, this and that. And I respect people that make those decisions, but early on, I knew from looking at But early on, I knew from looking at him, that I wanted to be a sergeant. That's what I wanted to do. I wanted to be the young sergeant and I wanted to help my guys, you know, and run the shift and lead them, you know, and, and do as best as I could for my guys and for the community. That being said, you know, I aimed all my goals and everything to get to this position. And you know, obviously I gotta thank my dad for all the guidance, my parents for all the guidance, all of our guys. I definitely gotta thank Lieutenant Carlos Nunez, took me under his wing early on as a young PSA, taught me a lot. You know, I gotta thank Sergeant Albert Vargas too, showed me a lot, mentored me a lot. And I certainly, you can't paint a better picture than this. But that guy gave me my OIC that I'll never forget, that trained me, took me under his wing, showed me what it really means to be a supervisor, to ultimately get me to this position. Is Lieutenant, you know, Castillo, which I don't know where he went. He's right there. And I'll never forget what he did, sitting me down, teaching me day to day, A to Z, how to do this job. And I'll be forever grateful because he helped propel me into this position, you know? And this is three PSAs that have climbed the ranks of this department. And you know what? We're really going to continue to excel. And everybody in the City of Miami Springs should be so confident, you know, and just trusting our abilities. Because we absolutely love this city and we love the people in the city. And I'm going to stop talking because I'm already ramping. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you guys. Thank you.
The original Collins. Good afternoon. My midnight guys here now.
The council, council first, guys, council first. Officers.
Again, thank you to our police department, every single one of you in our police department. Our community is eternally grateful for your protection and service. Council's staying here just because, not we're walking back and forth so much with, um, when we have the presentations. Um, our next presentation is, we're very thrilled and I'm not sure if he's here because.
He is, he is, he's, he's right out there.
Oh, okay. Good, good, good. Is, um, Years of Service Award and JC, I'll let you.
Yeah.
Do the honors.
And one of the, as you know, Mayor and Council, um, last, I guess it was last month, we started this, um, this program to, um, recognize employees for their years of service. Uh, we have some amazing employees here in the city. And, uh, I just thought that it would be appropriate because I mean, I was, I was, uh, inspired by the police department. To recognize all of our employees when, when they reach certain milestones as far as the years of service. And today, we have the honor of, uh, we have the pleasure of, of recognizing, um, Omar Luna, who has been here.
We're recognizing Omar for 15 years of service, of exceptional service to the city. Your dedication and contributions have been instrumental in our success. Thank you for your commitment to excellence and congratulations on reaching this 15 years of service milestone.
Thank you, Mayor.
And a pen, beautiful pen.
So I gotta give a speech now, I guess. All right. So, um, honestly, when I first started here, uh, Jim Boardman and Ron Gorlin told me that I could leave a legacy. Because we had a brand new community center building up. We had plans for an aquatic center and things like that. And, and honestly, like, I was like a little bit scared to be honest with you because I was very young. And they gave me a big job to do, but. At the end of the day, like, you're only as good as the people you surround yourself with. So 15 years here have been a blessing for me because of the people I've worked with. Uh, I'll name a couple. First of all, Patty Bradley, she's not here today, but she was a huge mentor to me when I first started. She was one of the people that actually took me under my, you know, gave me an opportunity to really understand how the city worked. Uh, Kalen Smith, without her, Albert Vargas, who's one of the few, A-Rod, Danny Valdez, Marcus Martin, who works for me now. James Dean, these are the people that have actually, that they grew up here, they lived here. And they kind of gave me that vision of what we wanted to do with the city long-term. And without them, I wouldn't be here today. I promise you that. Direct Department is something that it takes everybody. We, we start at six in the morning and we end at 10 at night. And I can't be there from six in the morning till 10 at night. I can't be there every Saturday. I can't be there every Sunday. So you have to trust these people. You have to put your life in their hands. And they've done an amazing job, the ones that, and all the part-timers I've had, a lot of them have gone, some of them are police officers like Lazaro, uh, Frius. I mean, there's so many people that have made an impact on my journey. So I want to thank them. And I want to thank God, number one, because without him, I would not be here. And my family, they're not here. They're actually at Burrito who are waiting for me. So, um, but it's a blessing that I'm here and I hope I can go another 15 years and retire here. That was my, my goal. I live here and thank you so much, everybody. Thank you.
And I'd just like to say, in the years that I've been on the council, Omar has, um, added so many, Omar and his team and his staff have added so many new and recreational opportunities for our residents and expanded ones that we had to make them much, much better. So, um, thank you so much, Omar, to you and everyone at the Parks and Recs. Uh, it's like you said, it takes a big group to make, um, every single offering that we have in the city work. So thank you. And the next, um, award that we have is recognition of 10 years of exceptional service for Rose Pinaya. Rose, come on out. And JC, I'll let you take it over.
Rose is, um, our HR specialist, their, their department of two, her and Bill. And, um, one of the first faces I met when I started here, um, helped me with, with all of our paperwork. She does it every day with a smile. And, um, she's just an asset to the team. So congratulations on your 10 years.
Congratulations, Rose. This is, we have, um, in recognition of 10 years of exceptional service to the city, your dedication and contributions have been instrumental in our success. Thank you for your commitment to excellence and congratulations on reaching this milestone of 10 years. And I found out today that it's actually more, right? Because it's 10 years as a full-time employee, but you've actually three years as part-time. So just, um, amazing commitment and, and like JC, a lot of our departments, some of our departments, you know, we call them departments and it's one or two people. It's, they have a lot on their shoulders and, um, this is certainly an example of that in human resources. So thank you, Rose, in a beautiful pen. Would you like to say?
Thank you. It's an honor and a pleasure to work with the city, work with all the departments. And have my, my boss, he always take care of me and supporting everything. It's a pleasure to work, um, and help all the departments, not only the department heads. Employees, they have any question, they come to us. And they, they say that they are treated like a family, uh, as we are. The City of Miami Springs employees, we are a big family. Civilians and police departments, we are together, working together for the city and the residents. Thank you.
I don't know that many other cities in Miami Dade County or in the nation indeed can claim so many employees that, um, started working here and have chosen to make this their career. Not move on, but just stay here and move up in ranks and continue to serve our city. I think that says a lot about our community and we're very, very grateful to our employees, all of them. And, and keep that in mind too, um, you know, the employees that are working for you are very often your neighbors. They know our community in and out and they're as passionate about it as we are. So thank you again. And our last, um, we've had a lot of presentations today. It's wonderful. It's very exciting. Is, um, the Certificate of Recognition for the Yard of the Month. Our Parks Board, every year chooses a part, uh, Yard of the Month. And the Yard of the Month this for December was 1289 Quail Avenue, the home of Efren and Maria Mendoza. So, oh, the Mendoza's, I know them. I just realized. Okay. And they have a beautiful home. So, um, they're not here, I don't think they're here, right? I was told they weren't here to receive the award, but we will get this to them. Um, if you have time, whenever you're going around Miami Springs, be sure to drive by their yard at 1289, uh, Quail. It's right on the corner of Quail and, um, and Ludlum. And, um, appreciate their yard and, and we're very grateful for all the homeowners who participate, um, to keep their yards really attractive. It's, um, it's, it's, it makes it so much fun to walk or bike or drive around the springs when we see such beautiful yards. So thank you all. Okay, we're going to move on to open forum. We have, uh, four people signed up to speak at open forum. I'm going to call you up. Um, I just want to, uh, remind everyone that open forum is an opportunity for you to address the council, all of us at once. We're all ears. It's a one-way communication. You address us, we don't respond, um, because these aren't agenda, I, you know, it's, it's, it's not within our agenda at the time. But we're all ears, we're listening and after the meeting or next day, whenever you like, if you want to follow up on it, you're on your item, you can reach out to any of us individually or to our city manager, our city clerk's office. And, um, we'll assist you in following up with your concern. Okay. So, um, I'm going to ask you to please keep your comments to three minutes. And we'll call up, the first person is Bob Best, our former council member.
Well, first of all, Happy New Year, everybody. First, first council meeting of, uh, 2025. It was quite the night for the blue line tonight, wasn't it? I've never, I don't believe I've ever seen that before, that many officers recognize real good night. And also for Omar. If I'm not mistaken, Omar came from Homestead. Originally at, at Parks and Rec down there, didn't he? Yeah. And, uh, it's hard to believe he's been here 15 years. He really is. Nonetheless, I'm here tonight, uh, more like, more, more or less as a veteran. Um, and I know you guys have, uh, an agenda item on nine C and I chose to speak tonight under, on, under form because I don't need to hear responses and stuff. You guys do your due diligence, I'm certain. But I did want to just, as a member, uh, one of the officers of the ad hoc committee, who's been at this for three and a half years. Um, and most all of you in this, in chambers tonight and at home, uh, will recognize that they've been well at it now for a good five weeks. And it's making significant progress. I try to make it a point to stop by once or twice a week and talk to the foreman and get, get the nickel tour, you know, what's going on with it. And, uh, there is, uh, the purpose of it being on your agenda tonight, and I'm sure JC will brief you further on this, but I just wanted to, uh, again, as member of the, of the committee, explain that, um, it's as a result of a change order, which was found under, uh, during discovery. Because the original intention of this monument was not to raise it and build a new one. It was to simply refurbish our existing one and add to it. In the course of discovery, they noticed that when it was built back in the 30s, they used cinder blocks. No rebar and just cinder block. Butt at each other, going all the way across. And that is shown its age through the years. And that's why, as a result of driving by, you see all the chipping away at the area and stuff because of oxidation and moisture that's gotten in there. The fix will be to go in and to properly rebar it and fill it with cement. And that's what you're facing tonight when you vote on nine C. I believe there's a couple other items that are, put in there with that. But, um, I just wanted to be here tonight to mention that to you and hope again in your due diligence, um, that, that you'll move the project forward. I believe the, uh, time of completion is estimated at the end of February. Uh, which was well in advance of what we had hoped for originally. And, um, so it'll be ready well in time for, uh, Memorial Day. And I think I have satisfied my three minutes. So thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you so much. Okay, next we have Estella Vega. Is it Vera? Vera, sorry.
Good evening, everyone. Um, thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Could you speak into the mic, please?
That better? Okay, thank you. I said, um, good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Uh, my name is Estelle Vera and I'm representing the members of the tennis and pickleball community. And I'm here to speak about the ongoing issues at the tennis center. We have collectively composed a detailed letter regarding our concerns about the current management company, Valiente Sports. Additionally, we have a petition that has been signed by over 441 residents. Copies of both items are being presented here for your consideration. Very briefly, we are requesting the city to take over the tennis, tennis center's daily activities. And hire professionals to come in and offer reasonably priced tennis lessons and clinics for our children and residents. The city can receive, of course, a percentage of all the activity derived from these lessons. The tennis professionals can also help the city organize events and tournaments as needed. I'm keeping my comments brief because our petition and our letter has a lot more detailed information for all of you to consider. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, I think we have a copy of that. Yes, we, we have a copy of that. Thank you. All right, next we have Israel Alonso.
You know, they say coming up to speak in front of people is the worst thing, worse than like dying. And I'm feeling it right now. Okay. So I'm not used to doing being in this position. But to follow up with the group that Estella just represented is we our community, our tennis and pickleball and racquetball is an incredible community. And it's been on going on for years. I've been here twenty years and I've been part of that community. And it's great place to see the kids grow up, learn how to play tennis. And it's an incredible spirit. And I've recently got into the the pickleball with the group that that I'm here with. And it's an incredible group. They're friendly, they're upcoming. I invite all of you guys to join us, ladies, older folks, younger kids. And it's a great, great group and spirit. And unfortunately, in the last X amount of months, that spirit has been slowly taken away from us. And it seems like the ingredient that has changed is the new management company. We go and we want to do certain things like, hey, we want to use that court that's empty. And that seems to be like common sense and that's prohibited. And little issues like that, and and I take that back, that's not a little issue. These are issues that unlike the meeting that we just had here where it was all celebrated with the officers, we're we're talking about something negative, something sad, which is slowly dying out. And it's a sad thing. And if you're not there witnessing it, I've noticed a lot of the people, they just go and go to other parks. And I'm not sure how much of that you guys are aware. But we're here to let you know that that's taking place. The kids that used to play tennis and be taught to play tennis, I know for the X number of years, they seem to have evaporated. Now, I don't know the exact quantity, but it seems like it's a lot less. And I and and just to top it all off, there was an event that it took place with one of our, one of our players, which should have never have happened, an argument that took place. And it should never happen. And and when you're dealing with the public, you should have the sensibility, I believe, to to be able to negotiate or talk down and and resolve things without getting into the argument level, without it getting into this level. I would never be here. I would rather be at the pickleball courts, the same as my comrades back there. So anyway, I don't know if I've taken three minutes or not. I still haven't died, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. And next we have Tom Curtis.
All I can say is what a display of community and and what Miami Springs is all about here tonight. And I'm here to talk about, to bring up the issue of the River Cities Festival. Because I'm concerned I started with the festival back in the seventies and I've turned it over to a number of people over the years. And nineteen, in two thousand nineteen, I turned it over to Julie Arias, and she's been running it for the last five years, whatever it is. And she has indicated that she is no longer going to continue to do the festival. And I I'm willing to step forward, but I'm here to ask, and and this is not the appropriate forum, let's say, because I'm here to ask that the city, I need the the city of Miami Springs to get behind this and to support the festival. You know, it's it's just not feasible without and it is, it is the Miami Springs Festival, you know, it attracts people here and it brings focus into Miami Springs. And I'm just here here to there's no action to be taken, but there is action that needs to be taken if you want to have the festival. So I'm here to volunteer as I have for all these years, but I'm not going to do it. I can't do it without the support of the city. So if you look in the past, the city has supported the festival with with dollars and with with some in kind stuff. So however we go from here, I just want, you know, the the festival's scheduled for April twelve, thirteen and fourteen. So, you know, we're you know, we need to make some decisions whether there's going to be a festival. So I'm hoping there is. Like I said, I've been involved for a long, long time. So that's all I got.
Thank you, J C.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have anyone else signed up for open forum. So we'll move to approval of the council minutes for the December ninth, twenty twenty four regular meeting.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Fahad?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we move to reports from boards and commissions, and we have an annual report by the Centennial Committee. And my understanding is we have three representatives of Centennial Committee here to come up. Four. Okay, great.
Don't forget Mike.
Oh, five.
And Mike, a council.
Hello, Mayor and Council. How are you doing today? Just a little bit update from our our last Centennial Committee meeting. We have launched the website finally for the Centennial Committee. We still got some little bit of work still to do, but it's already live, already accepting donations for the Centennial events. We've also had a successful bike and car show that we had with also that was included with our Centennial Gala, which was a great success to kick off the year to start the Centennial Events. We're also working to make some step forwards and securing some grants for the playground, which I'm going to bring Kathy up. She'll mention also to about our Centennial Trees that we'll be doing probably with the Lions Club that we're working on that. Let me bring her up in just a minute.
Should we introduce?
Yes.
Let's introduce Sherry first. This is our new chairperson.
Can you speak into the mic, Kathy, so the people at home can hear?
Okay, well, Sherry's going to introduce herself, but she's our new chairperson. So I thought we should maybe introduce her first.
Thank you so much. I'm I'm so proud. I'm so happy that our meeting was held on the same night as all of this awesomeness that we got to see tonight. I I come from a blue line family. And I've I know I've only been in Miami Springs for twenty four years, so I'm a newcomer here, which people keep reminding me of. But I'm very happy to be a part of this Centennial Committee and contribute however I can. So thank you, Mayor Mitchell.
Thank you, Sherry.
Okay, my name is Kathy Doyle, resident of Miami Springs since nineteen eighty, a teacher for thirty six years. And the proud teacher of some of our council members and our senior retired Jeff Collins was one of my students back in the day, and both Matthew and Robert were in my ninth grade, right? I think it was ninth grade classes. So anyway, I'm proud to. Okay, so a couple of things. I I went ahead and did a little summary because I looked at last year's summary in February. And we haven't changed that much, but I just wanted to say our goal is for everybody to have something to celebrate and that we have several permanent installations, if you will, after we walk away and have a good time next year, that we can say we contributed to the city. Okay, so the first thing I did was go, because I didn't, you know, Sandra just sent this message and said, give a report. And I thought, okay, the English teacher and me decided we were going to give a report. So this is one page summary. Okay, starting in January, our goal is to have not fireworks, okay, but a drone show, which is going to cost money. But on the Saturday after New Year, so the the weekend before we all go back to school, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, that we celebrate Miami Springs. We know better than to do it on New Year's Eve because everybody has their plans already for New Year's Eve. But we will have a Miami Springs kickoff for the year twenty twenty six. And wouldn't Glenn Curtis approve of a drone show? Because he's an innovator, right? And he was an innovator, and we wanted to celebrate that. Okay, followed by if we get the funding, okay, the dedication of the statue that weekend of Glenn Curtis that we hope to put on the, you know, Glenn Curtis Parkway by the clock. Okay, that would be January's activity. February, we're hoping to have a Roaring Twenties Gala at the mansion. And we had that idea. It's been on our papers for two years because don't forget, we've been meeting since October twenty twenty three. Our committee started, okay? And you know who's who's beaten us to it, but they don't have as pretty a facility to have it in? I just saw in the newspaper yesterday that Coral Gables is having a Roaring Twenties Gala for their Centennial, which is this coming this year instead of next year. But anyway, we're going to do one anyway. It'll be better and prettier because it'll be at the mansion. Okay, the idea is to have it sort of around Valentine's Day, okay? And that will hopefully be a fundraiser. In March, where the Women's Club set up this year, had their first recurring Taste of Springs, and now they're going to call it Taste in Springs, so they can have additional restaurants come from out of the community. But they've agreed and we've suggested that they do that in March, so it doesn't conflict with River Cities, which is on our calendar. So hopefully you'll find a way to make that continue to happen. Okay, we're hoping with in April of twenty twenty six to have a couple of activities. It is Arbor Day, so we're hoping, we already have a commitment from the Lions Club to plant one hundred trees in our community for the Centennial. Okay, besides that, that not on this agenda, because we want to plant the the Centennial Tree near where the statue is going to be this year, right, J C? So that it's thriving. Okay, we've we've chosen golden poincianas. Okay, and we want to plant at least five. We're reserving, from what I understand, two spots on the incoming bridge. Once they've renovated the bridge, we're going to have matching trees on that incoming, you know, easement on our on the spring side. Okay, we're hoping to have one near the clock. Okay, and then our goal is to have one on the east, coming into the city from the east, possibly one from the west. And we're not sure if anything else will grow, but there's already a poinciana tree near the Miami Springs sign coming in from the south. South. Okay, so anyway, there's going to be Centennial Trees, but besides that, in tribute to our Tree City USA, we're hopefully going to have a hundred new trees planted in Springs. Okay, thanks to the Lions Club. Our, we know that our committee can't do all this, so we're trying to recruit different organizations and service clubs to claim an activity so that we have at least one kind of celebration every month of the year. Okay, so in May, okay, did I just get anything? In May, we're hoping for something for the ladies of the community. So our goal was to think of a luncheon that was a decades fashion show, okay, celebrating everything from the nineteen twenties through the twenty twenties. All right. And we're still looking for a sponsor for that. Okay. So if anybody's here tonight and has any ideas, we'd be welcome to for that planning. May twenty first is Glenn Curtis's birthday. Our library usually does a celebration. We're hoping to make it a big celebration, invite everybody to have a birthday cake for for him, okay, on in May. We're not sure when the golf, there's a golf tournament planned, hopefully something that will attract the airline personnel, okay, from around the country supposedly. I think Alex is working on that, and he can talk to that about that a little bit more detail. Fourth of July Parade, our goal was to really make it a parade parade with floats, remember those? And really challenge every organization, maybe every church, to really sponsor a float that would either be devoted to our history or the history of the United States, which will also be celebrating its two hundred and fiftieth anniversary next year. So, you know, maybe a little bit more than a water parade, maybe. Okay, no children around. All right. Then other summer events, we're not, we don't have a commitment to this yet, but the World Cup Games are going on. And they're sponsored, I think, by Telemundo, right? Is that right? Okay, so they're part of our community, and we were hoping maybe we could convince them for maybe one of the games that's not here, that we could have like a big screen set up on the golf course and invite the community to watch one of the World Cup Games. So we don't conflict with the ticket sales, you know, for the ones that are here. Then August, I'm sorry, August, I believe, twenty third is our city's anniversary. Horrible day when you think about it, because kids are back to school and some people are still on vacation. It's going to be hard. We'll do something, even if it's just at the pool or, you know, maybe they're, maybe we can pit pony up with their end of the summer celebration or whatever. Okay, September, October, we don't have a date yet, the Pelican Playhouse. It has resurrected the script for the seventy fifth anniversary. There was a play created and they're going to perform it. And we're encouraging them to perhaps do a school version, okay, or have some kind of presentation with some scenes that we can take around to the schools. November is the, will be the Third Annual Motorcycle Show, right, Mr. Santin? Oh, no, no, I'm talking about twenty twenty six. Yes, okay, and that'll probably be our last big event. Because then we'll have some kind of closing ceremony, maybe, you know, it's it's December and it's busy. And I think we'll, we don't want to put her out, but we'll do something special, maybe the night that Santa comes to the the circle. Okay, so those are sort of where we're at. Now we need to obviously make it all happen. Besides that, okay, the the permanent things, okay? Number one, the statue of Glenn Curtis that everybody seems to want. And we thought we had funded, but we don't. So that's estimated with the base to be about a hundred thousand dollars. Just saying. Okay, we consulted a playground, the playground company that did the playground at the Prince Field and the Senior Center. Okay, Omar is very enamored of them because they're so dependable and they're so creative. And their estimate, I I don't know if this is, it was, it's a lot. It's like three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we have a little committee. I don't know if this is legal or not, because we've done it, but J C, Omar, myself, Elizabeth Fisher, and a young lady who I'm very proud of also, her name is Emily Bruner Messina. Okay, she is a PhD professor at F I U. She's returned to our community. She is Secretary of the Historic Society. And her specialty is physical therapy, recreational therapy. Okay, her, she's also an experienced grant writer. She's already presented, we have a video, you know, if you ever want to see it, we have like a presentation that she created. We've already presented to a representative from Boeing. We also know, you know, Boeing's one of our residents, right? Okay, they only apparently have seven training centers around the country. They have a full time, a lady that's a full time just for Florida Community Affairs Specialist, and she's the one that we presented to already. Of course, Boeing has some financial difficulties now, so they're not sure, you know, what they're going to be able to do, but she's taking that information back. And then we're hopefully going to consult with Airbus if we can't get Boeing to say, oh, yeah, no problem. The cost, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Okay, but that's almost everything, except we would have to prepare the the grounds. And I know J C can explain that better than I can, but that's not cheap. Okay, the other goal is that we have a set of pins designed and that that competition is being released this month and the deadline is going to be April first. Our goal was to have a set of pins, one for every month, so that we could reward people who are contributors or attendees. We're hopefully creating a thousand pins each month. I think the total is like fifteen thousand dollars for the year. Okay, but it would be a collector's item and the last month would be the Centennial Committee pin. So we're going to ask our senior center, center, our our A P art history, art students at the high school and any other community members who are artistically inclined to participate in that. And those rules and everything are already set up. School activities, we are going to be encouraging hopefully something that will help our fourth graders who study local history. Study our local history, okay, and can, you know, in coordination with their curriculum. So we're going to set up something called traveling trunks with costumes that they can wear, you know, the aviator goggles, et cetera, et cetera. They can take pictures, they can, you know, do some research. We'll give them some activities to research Glenn Curtis's contributions, Eastern Airlines contributions, et cetera. And so for the elementary school kids, we have that under underway. We've already talked to Mr. Acosta at the high school, and he's willing to sponsor a flight training day for our residents, so we can all go in and try out the simulators. We may have to do that more than one day if we ever get enough people interested. Okay, so I've talked way more than three minutes. I don't know if there's a limit to these reports or not.
There's not a three minute with this. That's for open forum. Your committee report.
I was being sarcastic. I was being facetious.
I'm sorry. Okay, we have some needs, though.
I was being sarcastic. I was being facetious. I'm sorry. Okay. We have some needs though, obviously. My concern personally is how long it takes everything to happen. Okay. And I really don't know how this is all going to happen. If we're, you know, I'm sure we're going to be meeting weekly, but you know, if we can't talk, I'm all this, I don't know what's legal and what's not legal, but this is going to have to happen. So I think you should all become members of our committee. So we can all make decisions right then and there and vote to spend money. So we don't have to wait months to do each thing. Uh, that's, I'm being facetious again. I'm sorry. I know I am, but seriously, we have, I mean, this is really not an efficiency. Okay. I'm going to give you an example. We had, um, Mary Jo, I'm going to give her credit for this. She researched a year ago what companies were celebrating their hundredth anniversary, figuring, oh, we can reach out and get some sponsors, right? And, uh, we reached out to Godiva is a hundredth anniversary and we said, we wrote a whole letter, okay, encouraging them to sponsor our gala. We could have Godiva chocolate fountains, et cetera. The letter was proofread a year ago. It's sitting somewhere. And then we've never had permission to send it. That's the example that I'm worried about, about how we're going to make all this happen because we want it to happen. But it's, we, we need your help, obviously. Okay. Um, and I should shut up now, right? Oh, and we just need people who can reach out to airline. I mean, our airlines should be willing to sponsor. And I want to compliment, um, Mr. Santin for being at every one of our meetings, I think, and being such a supporter and such a fundraiser, but, um, he knows it's like, this is what we want. This is the wish list. Uh, we need your permission and blessing, but we also need money. Okay. I'll shut up now. Go ahead. Oh, go ahead.
The website. Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Mary Jo. One name celebrity. So no need for last name. Um, what we need is please, uh, donations, speak to a friend and bring them to our webpage that Alex has work on. And we need to donate. Um, I've been walking from door to door with our donation form and dropping them off. So that the work could get out there. We need the community to get involved and get excited as much as I am. Alex, Ms. Kathy, we're all like thrilled. Just think about what does that one hundred year mean to us? Uh, for example, I mean, sadly, um, our great president Jimmy Carter just passed away. And could you comprehend nineteen twenty four to twenty twenty four? To me, that's like mind boggling, you know, and I found out we have some centennial, uh, residents here. So we're thinking perhaps that we may need to honor them on twenty twenty six, something very simple that may not cost much. So please help us out and get people excited about twenty twenty six.
Okay. Well, I want to first welcome Sherri. Thank you so much for stepping in, um, as the chair of the committee. I know from all the work that you've done with the Curtis Mansion and in the community and all, um, we're very lucky to have you as part of the committee. So welcome and thank you. And for, um, Kathy, Alex, Mikey, Mary Jo, and everyone else on your committee, um, thank you on the part of our residents. I know you've been doing this, like you said, for way over a year. And, and stuck it out because, you know, sometimes someone just go, it's taking too much of my time, or I'm just, you know, no longer interested, whatever. Um, you guys are, um, just the heart and soul of the Centennial Committee. Um, our fourteen thousand residents are going to enjoy a lot of stuff because of you and, and the members on the committee. Everything that you said, Kathy, I am excited about. I mean, it sounds awesome. Every single celebration of, you know, the, the whole twenty twenty six to have that caliber of celebrations, um, it's wonderful. Um, and I'm just want to make a few points and then I'll let the other council members, I'm sure they have something to say. But when we're talking about reaching out to Boeing for the playground, I love the idea of, of the playground, um, you know, of having an airline themed playground, but, um, Airbus, I think we should be reaching out to them too, because most likely, you know, nothing needs to be one sponsor. It can be a combination and Airbus is in Miami Springs. Um, Boeing is actually V G, which is our community, but, um, so I think, um, and the other airlines, of course. The other thing is I apologize for, I don't know, didn't know about the letter that's been sitting there, but we need to make sure that this isn't happening. I mean, you know, these are, this committee is donating their time, their valuable time, ideas and everything. And we shouldn't be holding them up. So J C, if we could look into whatever, not, and I'm sure that's just one example of everyone knows with government, things work a little longer. Everything takes a little longer. But, um, we need to be, make sure that we're facilitating everything that you need to do as much as possible on our end, not, you know, putting up, um, uh, blocks. Um, so let's, if we could, J C, if you could work with them and make sure, anything else like that, let's bring it to the forefront and let's take away at it. The other thing is when you were saying about the website and the donations, uh, let's get on our social media, the website. Asking, you know, with the push button for donations and it shouldn't be like a one time thing. We probably need to do it, you know, every week, every two weeks or whatever on our social media so that it's up and
Correct. The, the only issue that we're having right now is that we need to finish securing the site to protecting it from any hacking. Okay. So that's one of the issues that why we haven't really advertised it so much out there because of that. So that's where, those are the final steps that we need to secure the, the site. Then we can start advertising it.
And then we probably need to, and if you may already have this as another way, not just, you know, not everyone uses social media or donates through social media, but another way to get information out for those members of our community or, or visitors to our community that, you know, would like to make a donation, um, toward the centennial. And I don't know if you already have something in place.
Well, we have some forms that we give out and those forms, they can make the donations through the forums and they can bring it in here to the city hall and, and, and bring it in. So there are different ways that they can do the donations also, just not just the site only.
Okay. So maybe if we have some forms, you know, at different, at the rec center, at the senior center.
Already in all those locations.
Okay, wonderful. Oh, good, good. Okay. Um, and again, um, thank you. I, I think all of those celebrations are so different. You know, every month it's something exciting. The women's club, I know we have some members of the women's club here. The taste in this to be part of this is wonderful, reaching out to, um, our civic clubs. And, um, I just, and in fact, I want to invite them for the next meeting, a civic club. I mentioned our civic clubs, which are so amazing. Um, but Alita Lodge, um, I just found out they signed up to, um, clean up, you know, to keep Northwest Thirty Sixth Street clean. Um, and they're another civic club that I haven't given recognition to. So I do want to invite them to a future meeting to recognize them for their efforts. Um, and there's so many others like that, that, um, that getting them involved, you know, throughout that year with different months is, is a wonderful, um, way to get the, the engagement of the community. Did you want to say something?
I just forgot when we were talking about the playground, aviation theme, but our goal is to make it a universal playground. And this was a really big selling point for Boeing when we talked to them because there are very few, um, uh, playgrounds for not just handicapped accessibility, but, um, for autistic children. Okay. So, and yes, yes. And there's, and the quiet areas and the cubbies, you know, where they can get away from the commotion, but still be part of the play. Um, and that's one of, um, that's one of Emily's specialties and also what she's featured in the, uh, in the presentation.
Do you, have you recommended a site for the playground?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry.
Is, is that the one by the Historic Society?
Okay, okay. So that playground exists, but it needs to be, you know, Omar said it's almost outdated. So I'm hoping that some of the budget money that you would normally spend to retrofit a playground could also be devoted to, you know, especially, it has to be leveled, it has to be expanded. I don't, I, I'm not the engineering expert.
Redoing the entire playground. It's already at the time that, reaching its end of life.
And, and one other thing is I wanted to let, um, residents know, anyone that's listening, is the committees, the Centennial Committee meetings are open to the public. They're open to residents. You don't have to be on the committee and, and this committee is very, very, um, what would I say, uh, receptive to ideas, to engagement. Um, so you don't have to be on the committee to bring forth ideas.
And our next meeting is Wednesday night.
Okay. And they're, they're right here, Wednesday night at six o'clock in city hall. And they meet so far once a month, but more likely it'll be, um, even more as we get closer to twenty twenty six. So thank you again for all of you for serving. And I don't know if anyone else on the council, um, wants to make some comments.
To the chair. Thank you for all of your hard work. I mean, you have a list here of very ambitious goals. But I, I definitely think that with, uh, city collaboration, we can maybe attain most of them, if not all of them. Um, so you said that you have the website up and running. Who's your domain and website provider?
Um, the web, I don't have the full details because it's somebody that we have, um, here in the city.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's doing the site.
We set it up in.
Yeah.
So when we do payments to the website.
It goes to PayPal. They go, this is a PayPal account that we set up. So the PayPal portion is very secure because it's PayPal.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we set it up through there.
Be a city. So you have.
The city, and then it comes to the city. And then we set, we separate those funds in the centennial account.
I guess what, what, whatever we can do to get that secured ASAP, if that's a cost, I think it's very minimal.
Yeah, it should be. The actual, the actual site for the donation is PayPal. That is.
That's secure.
That's secure.
No, but he's talking about the.
Yeah, on the, on the site itself. The actual website itself.
Yeah.
Um, I think there was something else there. And then also, uh, to piggyback off of Maria, um, the newsletters would be good too. Cause those go out pretty often. And, um, I wish I could be of more service. I'm just a little overwhelmed right now, but I just, I appreciate all of you just taking this lead because this is, this is a huge thing. Thank you.
Councilman. And, and before Councilman Santin speaks, I want to thank Councilman Santin for, um, he is the designated representative liaison between the committee and the council. So thank you for taking that on along with so many other hats that you've been wearing.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, I've told you guys, uh, in, in our meetings enough that I thank you for your commitment, but I want to say it publicly. So it takes a lot to be, you know, a lot of people out there talk a lot, talking good game, but they don't want to put their time to it. Because it takes some of their time or monies away from, uh, what they always complain about. So these guys have taken action and done something about it. And this is our community. It's our hundred year celebration that we're around the corner. So my plea is to everybody out there, please don't be the one on the sidelines talking and saying, well, we could have done better. We could have done this. Get up and do it. Get involved. Don't tell me that Coral Gables did a better job or Hialeah did a better job. We could do a better job than that, but we need a community to get involved. So they're asking you, I'm asking you, get involved, come to the meetings and we'll see what other ways that you guys can contribute. Um, and, um, and that way we have no excuses. So thank you.
Thank you.
And Kathy, I have a little surprise for you on Wednesday. It might get you a little more excited about your playground. But I'm not going to share it all yet. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I wanted to mention, and, um, this is very, very tentative, but, um, a commissioner from Coral Gables, we've been talking, um, a friend and about perhaps somewhere in twenty twenty six, having a multi-city celebration with Coral Gables. They're celebrating their centennial now, Opalaka and City of Hialeah. So that the four cities, um, we're going to be talking, the mayors about possibly doing something. And it's, again, it's very, very tentative. Because combining, you know how hard it is to combine things, just our city, you can imagine with four, three other cities, but that may be a possibility. All right. So thank you again, um, uh, for your service for, it's a very, very long commitment and for sticking it out, um, and coming up with such wonderful ideas. This is really exciting. It's going to be a fun, fun celebration. Thank you. All right. So we'll move on to, um, we don't have public hearings today and we have the consent agenda. Uh, we have four items on the consent agenda. Does anybody have an item that they would like to pull for discussion? I would just like to pull B for discussion. Uh, no, never mind. I, uh, it was resolved when I had the questionnaire. So, um, okay.
Motion to approve nine A, B, C, and D.
Second that. Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Uh, Vice Mayor Vasquez. Not sure if he's online. Um, Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Uh, Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fahad?
Yes.
And Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And I just want to mention part of this, um, with one of these consent agenda items, um, it's actually B is the, um, continu- completion or continuation of on Curtis Parkway of, um, the pavers that are there along Papa John's. Continuing the permeable pavers on that whole first block of Curtis Parkway, um, on the continuing it on the west side, but then, um, starting it and doing the whole first block on the east side of Curtis Parkway, which will add more parking, um, and it's in their permeable tiles. So they don't distract from um, allowing, you know, uh, water to permeate through to our, um, aquifers and, um, don't contribute to flooding issues. So let's move on to, we have no old business and we'll, whoa, we're zipping right through to reports and recommendations from our esteemed city attorney. You're first.
Okay. Uh, good evening, mayor, members of the council. I normally don't have much to report, which is good, but I did want to share some personal uh, news today because I feel like I, this is city specific. Um, I was uh, in December, named a partner in my firm officially, and I just wanted to thank all of you on the dais, uh, mayor, council, um, the manager, Mr. Mr. Jimenez, uh, and Tammy Romero, because I know that a very big part of my legal training and continuing, uh, learning has been in no part, uh, or no small part due to my time with, with the city. So just wanted to celebrate that. Thank you all.
Congratulations, Roger, and, and very, very well reserved, uh, deserved. You're, um, you're, uh, always available to us and have a lot of insight, um, legal expertise, but a lot of insight that I know when I reach out to you, um, you help me think through things. So, um, very much appreciated and congratulations.
Thank you. And of course, I just want to, one, one last thing, uh, major, major kudos to my wonderful partner Heidi, who is, uh, really, really trained me very well under her wings. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. City manager.
Hi, mayor, council. Thank you so much. Um, first of all, Happy New Year, uh, to everyone. And, um, just a few things to note. Um, the War Memorial, as, um, former councilman Best mentioned during public comment, um, this change order was necessary, um, but they're moving right along. And they should be done. He mentioned at the end of February, but I think it could come in a little sooner than that. Um, also roadway construction, they're, they're continuing on. And I do appreciate the patience of the residents over there. Um, I think we got one of the issues as far as cutting through traffic, um, under control at this point. But that one is also, um, I think within the next, Tammy, the next couple of months, it'll be, that'll be complete as well. So we're reaching the end, um, of that project. Then we'll move on to the next stormwater project that we hit down in, in, in the works right now. This week I'll be coordinating our Tallahassee, um, uh, lobbying trip up to Tallahassee and also our lobbyist for the federal lobbyist, um, is, wants to do a fast flying up to DC. So we can meet with, um, our congressman and, and our senators up, up in, uh, up in DC. We do have five hundred thousand dollars, a request in there that's still in play, um, for new police fleet. So I'll keep you guys informed.
Thank you, J C. Tammy, our assistant city manager.
Yes, um, uh, the registration is open for the eighth annual, uh, rec campout. It's forty dollars, uh, per tent, up to six people per tent. Uh, the campout weekend celebration is going to be January thirty first through February first, which includes dinner, movies and a breakfast. Then also we have our historical car show, uh, January nineteenth from twelve to four P M. At the Curtis Mansion. And then we have our ninth annual wellness fair, January eighteenth from ten to two at the women's club parking lot area.
Thank you, Tammy. Okay. Let's, um, let's see, is count, is Vice Mayor Vasquez still on? Okay. Then, um, Councilman, uh, Fahad.
Thank you, mayor. Um, it's, uh, it just makes me feel real good to, uh, see on an evening like this of, you know, all the, the homegrown. the homegrown talent uh, that, that gives back to the community within the Police Department, the people that we've brought in. Uh, we recognized Omar, uh, we recognized Rose, uh, people like TC that have been in this uh, city for a long time, stepping up, the people on the Centennial Committee, uh, working hard uh, to give back to the community, everybody here, uh, even the people uh, that aren't on the dais, the people that are in the gallery, there's, everybody here is committed to improving our city, uh, and, and it motivates, I'm, I'm sure all of us to continue to do our best uh, to give back to our community, and it's a real source of pride for me, so thank you to everyone.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Okay, so um, I was just, I was bursting with emotion inside with all these police achievements and accolades that were going on tonight. And um, just a mere fact that uh, now Chief Castillo and Lieutenant Robert Castillo, we grew up together, went to Springfield together. I saw these boys to men grow, and we're all serving our community in some way, so it was like extra special to see something come to fruition from childhood, I mean, I don't think it's things that we were probably thinking about, but the mere fact that we're celebrating this today, um, it's honestly a circle of, of love of community, and I hope that it continues for centuries to come. Um, I mean, I had, I was taken care of by, by his sister, I've seen Robert Castillo, uh, Senior, you know, he's like our, our number one crime watch. I mean, the guy deserves a key to the city, I'm thinking about it, because honestly, I, I feel very safe, and if it's not a police officer that I'm seeing, I'm, I'm seeing him in the little red car, you know, looking around, and I just want to, um, I'm very happy to see that on Hook Square during traffic hours, there's a lot more traffic control, so we're now starting to see um, a lot of people right now are getting in trouble, but sooner or later, I think that the process will start, the traffic, the bottleneck will start flowing, because they're gonna realize that Miami Springs is um, going back like 15 years when it comes to that. I mean, I've had two tickets in my life, and they've been here, so um, I'm, I'm not proud, but proud. And uh, so the police sighting I've also seen, I've, I've been seeing them very, um, I'm, I'm just saying this, because I, I appreciate the presence, and um, there are sightings where I didn't see before, and it's just nice to see the, the presence again, and I think that's gonna create a a curve of behavior of whatever is possibly flowing through our city, um, there's gonna be, the eyes will open, right? So I'm looking forward to, to a new generation of um, police supervision, I guess I would say. And I'm just really excited for the Police Department, because they had a lot of passion today, a lot of heart, and passion moves. Um, Omar, oh my God, I've known Omar forever, I've known his wife longer, I went to his wedding, uh, we went to, I went to school with Omar's wife, and again, it's just the continuation of the community, us growing together as a family, no matter what age you are, it's just nice to see familiar faces, and I, 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 I take great um, ambition, and, and I'm very proud of when I see my own um, community members move forward, you know, and they're moving high, and they're doing what they want to do, and when I see Omar, I think of rec center, I think of playtime, I think of kids, and I think that it's just, he's in a department where people go to release anxiety, release stress, uh, promote a, a better way of living. And uh, to have that recre- uh, a recreation center here in our own community, uh, to that caliber with such hospitality is just a pure blessing, just this, like the senior center, uh, a lot of cities don't have that, and I, I think that's golden. Um, the River Cities Festival, I do want to see that happen again, obviously in a different manner. I know that there's still people in the community that from back then, they've actually created commu- uh, committees for these type of events, so they're like full nonprofit events, and there's a lot of people we may be able to tap into, I'll get you some names. Um, where, you know, it's a committee, it's, it's reported to the city, it's, it's public and it's open, and I think we've lost a little bit of that, that um, that management of, of the program. So definitely will, the city I'm sure wants to have the River Cities again, but I think it's just, we're going back to the basics on how we're gonna execute such an event, so I'm looking forward to seeing what we can come up with there. Um, and thanks to Tom for coming up and talking about that. Centennial Committee, they did an awesome report, I mean, I was intimidated with the list, but we'll figure this out together. Uh, Public Works, I want to mention to you that I am very happy to see a lot of the brush up and um, manicuring around the city. There's always a new little spot that I never thought that they would see, and they're seeing, so I know that that's coming through, through our new director. So I thank you, I, I see it, I see it all the time, they were on Lululemon today, I just, I see, um, I see the work, and I really, really appreciate it. It makes me feel good when I drive around, so, um, let's see here. I think that's it, and congratulations to Roger again, wow.
Yeah.
Big moves. And I think that's it, I just want to thank all my colleagues for, for a good, a great meeting, and I hope we have a lot more like these.
Well, as many of my colleagues have already mentioned, uh, today, or tonight, should be a day that you should be a proud Miami Springer. It's understatement to see all these homegrown people that uh, now become police officers. And many I saw during the Recreation Department days of mine, and uh, and especially, I have to say kudos to my uh, to Omar, which our Councilwoman Bravo was mentioning, uh, because uh, I am a rec guy, and I was in the Committee Chair for 15 years, and he is probably one of the best hires we've done, uh, as much as I was proud of the stuff that we were doing back then, he's taken it to another level, so I'm proud of Omar and the uh, and all his staff has done as well. I'm also very proud of the hire that JC did with uh, with Juan and our Public Works Director, I see the difference. And the folks out there, they're slowly gonna see it, it takes a little time, but I'm sure you're gonna satisfy their hunger for that change, so I appreciate that, and of course, the same thing with uh, our, our um, chief. He took his initiative, started the year in the right way, which is safety, traffic control, and um, and I feel like he's also gonna make this city proud, and he's gonna continue to, you know, push on uh, to everything that we've always wanted. And um, last thing I guess is uh, well, it's early enough to uh, wish, well, this is, I think is the cutoff, I believe, today might be the cutoff. Happy New Year to everybody.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, for my part is, um, well, I just wanted to mention next weekend, as Tammy mentioned, you know, uh, make sure you try to participate with the Rec Campout, it's a blast overnight. Um, the Women's Club, the Health and Wellness Fair, this is going to be the ninth year, I think, and it is just always, always um, bigger and better. I don't know how it happens, but it does, so um, be sure to, to drop by there, and so many other, the car show that we're having, I mean, this is gonna be a jam packed weekend, so um, I hope all of our residents and visitors will go out and, and participate with that. And I wanted to touch on something that um, that I think everyone here on the Council has said about with the Police Department, with the Rec Department, with so many departments, um, so many of our employees are homegrown. They've decided to not just start their careers here, but um, to continue their careers here and give back to our community, and um, I hope we can get that same kind of, of commitment and engagement in April. We're having an election, and there's going to be several open seats on this Council um, for that election, so um, I'd like to encourage those of you in the audience, and those of you that are listening, to start thinking, talking to friends, uh, talking to mulling it around, you know, and, and getting um, uh, residents that are committed to the communities, there's so many of them that have worked so much and have done so many past projects over the years in our community, and this is the time, there's going to be several openings on the Council seat, um, we need um, some residents to, to decide to run, to make the commitment. It is a big commitment, I can tell you, it's the 24/7, it's never out of your mind, there's always, and, you know, there's the big issues and the little, and they switch around and all, um, but it's, at least to me personally, um, the rewards are so, so much more than the time and commitment that you give. Um, knowing that for, in my case, um, this is the town that my husband and I, even though I wasn't born here and he wasn't, uh, we raised our daughters here, our daughters are adults now, and this is the hometown that, it's their hometown, that we were able to give them such a wonderful place to live, and for me, um, my service on, on the Council has been um, paying back what the city gave to me, so please, um, I think the qualifying period is now, what? It's active, and when does it close?
Last day of qualifying is February 14.
February 14, so we've got about four weeks um, a month to um, start talking about it and um, reaching out to, you know, yourself or people that you think may be interested and consider running for a Council seat. With that, um, I wish everyone still a happy 2025, um, we have a lot of exciting things to look forward to. Um, God bless you, and this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor.